Granikis here.
Okay, so today is Wednesday, April 1st, 2020 at 7:00 PM, and I'm convening the regular meeting of the Orange City Commission. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith, here. Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Present.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
And Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here. I'm going to dispense with the flag salute tonight and move on to ceremonies, proclamation, and presentations, and I have one statement I'd like to make. I've been getting some requests from the community to hear something from the mayor and the commission, so I have a statement. This is a time in our lives that not one of us has experienced. I know anxiety and fear go hand in hand with the unexpected, but with care and planning, we can stay strong during the pandemic and perhaps grow from this experience. My first directive is to call your parents. Personally, I have two daughters that I'm in continuous contact with. They are lucky enough to be able to work from home, but as so many other are, they are concerned about the future, their employment, their friends' employment, the state of our economy, and which grocery store has their favorite microbrew. It's our job as parents and elders to help ease the concern and worry of our children and friends. We aren't here to sugarcoat the situation, however, we have been through times of crisis and war. We know that calmer heads prevail. Letting your kids know that everything is going to be okay and we're all taking a slower pace in life right now so we can resume normal is very important. My second directive is to call your grandparents, who can offer greater reassurance than those who have seen it all, experienced it all, and have gotten the stay-at-home drill down to science. My mother is in a care center where I can't visit her or send her packages. We talk on the phone, and I'll visit her through the windows of her room. The elderly in our community need our contact more than ever. We've seen the feature car parades online and on TV. Being creative about letting those in the community know they are seen is a great way to share support. My third directive is to keep supporting your local businesses. Support not only in ordering takeout or buying products and gift cards, but by offering support any way possible. The landlord to Betty Knight's business gave us the gift of a free month of rent for April. This came at a critical time in deciding how to move forward with our business. Many businesses need a break, or any support or effort that can be afforded will be most appreciated. Not all property owners are in a position to waive a month of rent, but maybe there are creative ways we can help take care of one another. We are all in this together. Collectively, we will persevere, and right now is the time to take a breath and stay calm and reach out. Many will need to hand up, and if you are in the position to provide support, please do so. Stay home, stay well, and save lives. With that, do we have any citizen comment?
We do not.
Okay. Then, everybody okay with the agenda?
I have one item I'd like to pull from the consent agenda, please.
Yes.
Item 8A, just for further discussion.
Okay. Well, let me get there, we'll pull that. So we'll move on to public hearings, 6A, PC 20-062, AP 19-001, Appeal of Land of Planning Approval of Two-Lot Minor Partition at 206 Holmes Lane. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. I want to introduce Deliana Vasaliva, Assistant Planner with the city.
Can the guys at home see this?
Yes.
Okay.
You're gonna do your thing, Bill?
Typically, we do that after the staff report.
Oh, you are seeing the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Um, thank you. I'm Deliana Vasaliva. I'm the Assistant Planner for the city, and I'll be presenting this staff report for AP 1901, which is an appeal of a planning application for a two-lot minor partition. My clicker isn't working, Katie.
Please stand by.
I don't see the little light on.
Try it again.
Ooh, there you go.
Not working. Technical issues. Uh, hmm, not sure why they're not working. Maybe you could advance for her.
Yes, I will try.
Yeah. In theory.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna...
April Fools.
We're gonna say all right.
We could pantomime the whole thing.
I could give the statutory, you know...
Why don't you do that in the meantime, Bill?
Yes, sorry.
So this is a time set for a hearing on this matter. The commission will proceed by the rules of procedure over here on the left with the first staff report, followed by public testimony from the applicant, followed by Representative Neighborhood Association individuals, and the applicant gets a final rebuttal. The material is... The matter is subject of a staff report that was available in the back of the room. It's also available online, and that staff report lists the applicable substantive criteria that apply to this matter. If anybody would like me to read them, let me know. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criterion in the plan or land use regulations you believe apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements are evidence sufficient to afford the city commission and the other parties to opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude an appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. And finally, the applicant... Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court.
Okay, well, I'll have to... I can move now. I can move through it, but...
We can do the... Do we have any ex parte conflict of interest or bias that the commission wants to declare?
No.
I have none, but I did visit the site.
No.
Any challenge from the audience? Seeing none?
Only Rocky and Frank.
Frank, Rocky?
Hmm, looks like they're saying no.
Okay. So for the record, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner O'Donnell neither have conflicts. And again, any challenges from the audience? None.
Are we waiting for me? I'm ready whenever you...
Oh, okay. So let's go to the next slide.
Do you want me to go to the next slide? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go. Okay.
All right. Um, so this is the subject site for the minor partition application, which is at 206 Holmes Lane. Go ahead, Katie. Uh, and the application proposed to divide the property into two lots and retain the existing single-family home and accessory structures on one of the lots. That application was approved by the Community Development Director on November 26, 2019, and was subsequently appealed by the appellant on December 6, 2019. Uh, go ahead. So our code identifies that for type-two decisions, including minor partitions, only those that participated during the comment period in writing have standing to appeal an application. The appellant did participate in writing during the public comment period for this application, so they have standing to appeal. And our code also identifies that the appeal is limited to the issues raised in the comments, and that no new evidence shall be considered during the appeal proceedings. Go ahead, Katie, please. Yep. So the issue that was raised by the appellant in the comment that they submitted during the public comment period for the minor partition application was regarding a nuisance plant called Lesser Cellendine that the appellant indicated is present on the subject property. The appellant included some information from several sources on the control and eradication of this plant, and identified in their appeal that... Or sorry, in their original comment, that the spread of nuisance plants is required to be controlled through local ordinance, and indicated that the minor partition application should be denied in order to prevent the spread of the Lesser Cellendine on-site because it can easily spread with ground disturbance. So they identified concern that the ground disturbance associated with the development may lead to the spread of this nuisance plant. Uh, so this issue of nuisance plants and control of nuisance plants is regulated in the municipal code, but it is regulated by the nuisance code, which is administered by the code enforcement department rather than the zoning code, which is administered by the planning department. So violations to the nuisance code are addressed through a separate code enforcement process and not through the land use process. With the land use application process, we are limited to reviewing the applicable criteria for minor partitions, which are spelled out in chapters 16, 16 of our code, and don't include any criterion related to the removal or control of the spread of nuisance plants. So in our review of this minor partition application, we found that all of the applicable approval criteria for a minor partition have been met or can be met through the conditions of approval, and therefore, the application was approved with conditions. So in short, this issue of nuisance plants is not regulated by the planning department through the land use application process. Rather, it's regulated by the code enforcement department through a separate code enforcement process that takes place outside of the land use review. So in addition to the nuisance plant issue, the appellant also raised several more issues, but these issues were not included in the original comment that was submitted during the public notice period of the minor partition application. So again, our code requires that the issues... Or the appeal is limited to the issues that were raised during the comment period. So the additional issues that have been raised by the appellant are, one, that code enforcement requires authorization by the planning department; two, that the city lacks the authority to act contrary to deed restrictions, and deed restrictions are protected by the contract clause of the U.S. Constitution; and three, that the land division could result in development, which is not historically appropriate for the neighborhood. So in the staff memo that is in your pocket, we went through each of these issues and explained why they wouldn't have impacted the approval of that application even if they had been raised during the comment period, because none of these issues identify any approval criteria for a minor partition that haven't been met. In addition to the additional issues raised by the appellant, the applicant of the minor partition application also submitted some new evidence, which was email correspondence with the Clackamas Water and Soil Conservation District and an approved nuisance plant control plan that was approved by the Clackamas Water and Soil Conservation District for control of the Lesser Cellendine on-site. But again, this is new evidence, which is not allowed to be considered per our code. And again, I'll reiterate that it's irrelevant because whether the nuisance plant was under control or running rampant on the property, none of that is an approval criteria for the minor partition and would be addressed separately through code enforcement. Go ahead. So with that, we are recommending that the city commission deny planning file AP 190001. And in addition, we are recommending that the city commission reject the three additional issues that were raised by the appellant that weren't part of the original comment that we received, and reject the new evidence submitted from the applicant. And I can answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Gubisman, do we need to include that, those rejections? I thought that under the code, we just didn't recognize that.
We... Ideally, the commission would specifically reject those items.
Okay. Can we get back to the people's screen?
Yes.
So I'm gonna do this one at a time so that you guys have a chance to chime in. Commissioner Smith, you got anything on this?
Not at the moment, no.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have a question for our planner, and it's, uh... If there's a... And I don't know that there is, but on any property, if there's an active code enforcement action pending, does that prohibit moving forward on this type of land use action?
Um, no. With the land use applications, we're limited only to review of the applicable approval criteria, so unless it's somehow tied in to a specific approval criterion, it wouldn't prohibit us from approving an application.
Understood. Thank you.
So do we have anything from the applicant?
Is that the applicant? Okay, then. He has requested to speak, yes.
Okay, let's hear him.
So, do you mind?
Which places?
Yeah.
I don't have anything specific.
You don't have anything you want to say? Okay.
Okay. So nothing from the applicant? Yeah, what about the appellant?
She was notified of the hearing. This actually has been postponed several times at her request. She's aware of the hearing and has not...
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing, and we can deliberate. Commissioner Lyles Smith, you have anything for us?
Um, not much. I guess a few comments. Just kind of as a side discussion, I guess. I struggled to find the list of approval criteria for a minor partition. I emailed Ms. Turway earlier today because I went looking on our website for chapter 16 dot 16 so that I could verify this whole conversation about whether or not noxious weeds or nuisance plants were even anywhere listed in there, and I personally struggled through that process, so I can only imagine how difficult that may be for our residents to kind of wade through there. So I appreciate Ms. Turway emailing me back. So that's kind of just a side note. I guess I'm not really sure where that leaves us, other than that, for me personally, it was frustrating because I wanted to be able to check that box that I had reviewed it, and I could say, yep, I don't see where it's... Where that's listed as applicable criteria, and so I'm not sure if there's a list or if it's spread out, or maybe someone can maybe address how someone is supposed to... How would they have gone through our code and figured out whether or not it was an applicable criteria?
So I think Katie can talk to this a little bit. So since 1616 was part of the recent code updates, it's... We have a third-party company that updates our online municipal codebook as well as our hard copy codebooks, the couple that we still keep. So there's a little bit of a lag time between when it's approved and when it shows up online, so it will be up there with the rest of 1608, 1612, 1616, once that codification process with our third-party company is completed.
Just feel lucky. When I was on the commission, the first time I had a codebook, and it's just thick, so...
Oh, I'm sure.
There it is.
We also have a website dedicated to each of these code changes before the municipal code gets updated, and we have a website dedicated to minor partitions solely, so it's a one-stop shop for all the criteria, fees, process associated with that. The general public would be aware of the criteria for a minor partition because we listed on the notice, and then it also goes... We create a website for each land or application, including a partition, and it's listed in there, too.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner McGriff, you have anything for us?
Just one thing, thank you. I appreciate the fact that the applicant has gone to the Soil and Water Conservation District to get a plan to eradicate the situation, because I think that's just being a responsible neighbor, and thank you very much for doing that. However, I can understand the appellant's frustration with trying to figure out how to deal with this, and I guess, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, go talk to your neighbor. And second, this was just really the wrong place to try to deal with that particular issue, but I don't see any reason to not uphold the staff's decision.
So, go ahead.
Um, Ms. Turway, was this issue of the nuisance weeds taken to code enforcement at any time prior to this? Or is... Now that the issue's been raised, now we know that it's gone to code enforcement? Do we know... I mean, was this ever tried to be addressed in the past, other than the Soil and Water Conservation District plan that the applicant had worked out?
I'll defer to Ms. Vasaliva. Um, so there was a prior code enforcement case for this issue, I think maybe from a couple of years ago. That case was closed, I think because the applicant submitted the control plan to show that they're working on the issue. When we received the comment for the land use application this time around, we forwarded it to code enforcement because this is an issue that they would regulate. So they have opened up a new case, but I think the problem with this plant is that it only blooms a couple of times a year or shows up a couple of times a year, so that case is kind of pending until they can confirm that there is a violation and the plant is present.
Okay. So somebody have a motion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
So my question is that the appellant is not in the chambers tonight, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And we postponed this a couple of times. I'm just wondering, was the option available for the appellant to participate online for this meeting? Or was that a... I'm just questioning. If I was someone in the public that was asked to come to a meeting, I would not be there, which is why I'm online doing it. So I'm just wondering if we made that as an option, and maybe that's the reason that there's people not attending tonight.
Well, in your position, Hollywood Squares, you'll see just below you, Mr. Dane, and he's on the next one. So the city notified people and gave them the option, either attend in person or by Zoom.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we uphold the planning file for the two-lot minor partition, AP 19... Four zeros and a one.
And reject...
Do we have to... Is that part of the same motion?
Yes.
Or is that a separate motion, Bill?
Uh, it's linked, yes.
Okay. And unfortunately, reject the new information that came in after the record was closed.
Thank you.
So uphold the staff's...
Yes, if I said uphold the staff's...
So deny the appeal.
Deny that.
All right. Yeah. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith. Further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye. So we'll move on to AP 20-01, Appeal of Approval Conditions of 20-Lot Subdivision Located at 13735 Lazy Creek Lane, Planning File, blah, blah. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. Need to put it on the screen? Yeah. As soon as I get you on the screen. All right. All right, this app...
Oh, wait, not yet, sorry.
The city received an application for a 20-lot subdivision on Lazy Creek Lane. That application was approved with conditions. I'll go through the slides in just a second. Bill, do you want to do your legal disclosures while those are coming up?
Sure, while we do that. Similar to the last hearing we just had, this is an appeal of a subdivision. The process that we'll use is set out in the board up here on the right, allowing the staff report, followed by the applicant, interested parties, and the applicant's rebuttal. There was a staff report prepared seven days in advance. It lists the applicable substantive criteria. All testimony, arguments, and evidence should be directed toward that criteria or those other criteria that you believe in the plan or regulations apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the city commission to respond to that issue will preclude an appeal to the land use board of appeals. In addition, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. That... Are there any bias, conflict, or ex parte contacts?
I have an ex parte contact. I met with the applicant prior to the appeal being filed as constituent service to try to see if I could help straighten the situation out. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I attended the same meeting.
Can I clarify? It was after the appeal was filed.
No, it was before the appeal was filed.
It was not.
Hmm, that's what we were told.
So what was the date that the appeal was filed? Do we know that? I believe it's...
Am I wrong, Commissioner O'Donnell? Was given any impression that we met after or before the appeal was filed?
I'm rechecking my calendar right now.
All right.
Let's find out what the appeal file date was.
It's March 4th.
The... It was after the decision was issued by the planning department, is that correct?
Right, but before the appeal was filed.
We met with the applicant on Friday, March 6.
And it'd be after the appeal was filed.
When was the appeal filed?
March 4th.
Oh, I thought you said that was when the decision was made.
No, the...
And Mark's agreeing with you as well.
Oh, okay. Well, then, we were mistaken about the timeline. I normally would not do that after an appeal had been filed. I apologize for that.
Mr. Mayor, in our defense, I believe that... I think he said he was in the process of filing an appeal, so that was what was represented to us. We were not aware that it had been filed.
Okay. Commissioner Lyles Smith?
Yes. This subdivision, this 20-lot subdivision on Lazy Creek Lane, was actually presented to my neighborhood association, I believe, in January. I'm looking at Mr. Lewis in the audience. I think it was January's meeting, because I know you and I were both there at that meeting, so I did get a presentation as an attendee of my neighborhood association on this proposal by the appellant. He wasn't the appellant at that time. He was just the developer presenting to the neighborhood association on... And getting feedback, so...
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
No, I have no questions.
Commissioner McGriff?
Oh, I have no conflict, sorry.
That's all right.
Wrong question.
I know.
Anyway, I have not had any contact with anybody related to this particular application, but I did visit the site on Lazy Creek Lane.
Thank you.
Any challenges to the sufficiency of the disclosures? Saying none?
Okay. So before we get into this hip-deep, I understand there's been an agreement reached between the city and the applicant. Is that right?
Yeah, the city has a revised proposal for you to consider tonight. I'll go through it a little bit.
Okay. Let's see if we can't abbreviate that process.
Okay. So the location is on Lazy Creek Lane. If you were to look at a map, to the right would be Malala Avenue, so this proposal would connect both parts of Lazy Creek Lane to each other. This is the development proposal. It's turned on its side, so it's a little bit bigger, but essentially, it is a large cul-de-sac, as well as that street connection of the two Lazy Creek Lanes. An appeal was submitted. An appeal was submitted and identified on the appeal were concerns regarding stormwater, specifically storm drainage options and how to deal with that in compliance with our stormwater and grading design standards. And then also cited on the appeal was the width of the public utility easement, but I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. As in the last item, this proposal's limited to those withstanding, evidence has to be in the record and issues raised in the appeal. I wanted to talk slightly about the development process. Planning provides a preliminary review approval, so we review compliance with the municipal code. Then Development Services identifies details of the development, so we identify where the roads go. Then later, they identify how thick the pavement is, some of those design details. They oversee as developers install streetlights and public amenities such as roads and sidewalks. And then once that's done, the land division plats, there's building lots and someone can construct a home, which is then reviewed by our building department. So within the planning portion of it, which is just that preliminary review approval, there's a couple of different processes to that. We review an application for completeness, we give all applicants a checklist and pre-op notes to identify what is needed for a complete application. And within that, we are just seeing, is the thing turned in? And then when we go, when we have everything that we need, we do a public notification and so the public can comment and all like complete application. And then we write a staff report where we do an actual analysis to see how well it does or doesn't meet the criteria. So in cases like this, was the stormwater calculations turned in? Yes, no? And that's as far as completeness review goes. If we see that something is awry within some responses, we also try and inform the applicant about that, about the quality of the response, but really the completeness check is just, is it there or not? Then we do the staff report to apply the criteria in the Oregon City Municipal Code, which are higher level when it comes to some of these details like stormwater. And then there's an appeal process. So Development Services does participate in completeness review and staff report writing because they identify the standards for frontage improvements and they also identify standards for utilities, including stormwater. So a joint venture on this one, I'll get back to why I explain the process in a little bit. This is the original submittal that was submitted, the application was deemed incomplete a few times, but in this submittal, you can see the road, so the curve at the bottom is Lazy Creek Lane, and then you see the road coming towards the top of the screen on that. There's a triangle on the very bottom, which is in, which is a pond. As you'll notice here, the pond is in the public right of way. So that was in some of the early submittals when we were doing completeness review. The final submittal that the applicant ended up going with was a revised location of the stormwater pond. So rather than have one large pond within the right of way, the revised submittal broke out into a series of smaller facilities. Generally, you can have a pond or you can have smaller facilities. Most land divisions this size go with a pond, but either can work just fine. Our job is to review them as, in relationship to the applicable approval criteria and provide conditions so that it can be approvable. In this case, you can see these series of smaller facilities have locations and some of them include between two properties and then next to the front of the property. Where the PUE comes in is that these proposed storm facilities were also located where a public utility easement would go. And public utility easements are locations for things like cable and different public utilities that get placed in that land so you can string wire between properties and serve the public. So it's problematic to have a storm pond over that because you may need to access those utilities over time. So though this application was submitted, the conditions of approval in the staff report that was approved identified that those facilities would have to move on site. As you probably saw looking at the submittal, there's lots of trees in the backyard, so that may not be an ideal place for that to go. So we, since the appeal was submitted, we worked with the applicant and came up with an alternative proposal, which was really going back to their original design, which was in the application. It was just not the one that the applicant chose to move forward with, with the complete submittal. So it was in the package, available for the public to review, but it was not the design that we did the initial staff report on. It is okay because it is still in the record. So with this design, it would include some vacation of the right of way because as we talked about earlier, that pond is in right of way. So the proposed revision that you have before you tonight that was sent does include going back to this pond and some revised conditions of approval to facilitate that. The pond, when it was originally submitted, was a little bit too small and so in order to allow for the pond to go in that location, the street needs to be a little bit narrower and the amenities adjacent to the street need to change. So rather than having a nine foot landscape planter on the south side of Lazy Creek Lane, it's switched to just a curb and then two foot public access on, behind that and a narrower pavement in that location that'll allow a longer area south of the street in the picture to have a larger stormwater facility. And then there's also revised condition of approval number 27, that requires that storm, the stormwater pond be placed in a track, which is our standards, we don't allow stormwater ponds in the public right of way. So you would see the applicant come back to you in some future date to ask for a vacation of that public right of way, either wholly or in part. With this revision, there's new documents that need to be added into the record, the three that were emailed to you earlier today, which is a memorandum, a summary of the revisions, and then the actual revised staff report. You have a couple of options before you tonight, but staff recommends option number three, which is, it's going to sound weird, but it's an approval of the appeal with the amended conditions and findings in the revised staff report. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, so we're going to hold questions and hear from the appellant at this point, or the applicant.
Okay, you're going to give me just a second to unmute.
I'd also like to have him on the screen.
Would you be able to go back after he gets done to the original picture of the area? Not now, but when you get there, when we get done with this part.
The aerial or the original, the first design, the second design or the aerial?
Mostly the aerial, so I can see the area adjacent to, you know, because when I drove it, I was, wasn't really good spot to stop to see this, so.
So Mark, you are unmuted. Can you hear us?
I can hear you very clearly, can you hear me?
You might have to speak up just a little bit there.
I can hear you very clearly, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's good, Mark.
Okay.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Mark Dane, 12725 Southwest Glen Haven Street, Fallin, Oregon 97225. I am here as the applicant planner and the appellant in this particular case.
I can't get him on my screen.
Go ahead.
So thank you everyone for being here this evening. My goal here is to, along with staff, I believe, try and move this project forward. Therefore, we approached this hearing with the intent of providing a solution by which both the applicant and the city could move forward with the final engineering drawings. In terms of the timeline roughly, we had a pre-op in July, we had some preliminary design, in August, we had the actual neighborhood meeting, which I believe John was also there as well in September. We had the submittal and then we had the original staff report roughly finalized late December, early January. During that time, most of these issues had been resolved, but the stormwater issue remained unresolved because of the elements for the private water, which is the water on the lots, and the public water had not been fully resolved and the potential consequences of a major change in the design would have substantial impacts on the project, on essentially the difference in terms of where we thought we were to where we were going.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, sorry, we just came into spirit. So where we were and to where we want, there was a big difference, about a half a million dollar difference, essentially it would kill the project. We utilized the appeal because it was the only thing that gave us any standing to work through the issues. We were able to meet with staff, our civil engineer was able to connect with them, we were able to reach a decision in terms of how stormwater could be resolved. We provided the preliminary numbers from Tom Cecil, our engineer, they were reviewed by staff. Staff was kind enough to put a lot of work in, in terms of the new conditions of approval and the modifications, we're very grateful for that. So we find ourselves where we have a project with findings and conditions of approval, conditions of approval that we believe are acceptable. Therefore, we are requesting at this time that the approval be amended through this appeal to include the conditions proposed by staff, specifically Mr. Wheeler, who's here this evening, and allow us to move forward. There will be some other things that we have to do after this that pertain to the final engineering and to the vacation of right of way, but they, they don't fit in this land use action. So we believe we can move forward and we believe the major issues have been resolved and we think staff's on the same page there.
Okay.
I want to make sure that, that's what I understand, I want to make sure that staff is on the same page. I believe they are, but I found this always best, just to check.
All right.
Make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you, so is the answer, are we all on the same page here?
We are.
Okay.
We are on the page of the revised report that we sent you.
Okay, is there any, do we have any other public testimony?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing and we will deliberate. Commissioner Lyles Smith, you have anything for us?
Yes, so first is my question about the change in the design to accommodate the pond. It looked like there was a change into the design of the roadway in order to do that, the narrowing of the street, does that mean we no longer have sidewalks or that kind of stuff in the curve of the road where sidewalks and bike lanes and stuff like that would be most needed?
You would have sidewalks on the side that's closest to the subdivision. On the side where the pond is, there will be no sidewalks, no.
Okay, but there will be a sidewalk on the north side of Lazy Creek Lane. Okay. Can, can someone answer for me why the meeting with the appellant was scheduled for the day after the appeal period closed?
John?
I think you're talking about a Public Works meeting, a meeting between Public Works staff?
Yeah, to try to work this, to try to work this issue out.
Stand by, Mark.
Say your question again, I'm confusing meetings, are you talking about a meeting with Dan and Frank?
No, no, so my understanding, after reading the appellant's letter to the city, the whole, one of the whole reasons of why he was appealing was because this was really the last lever that he had that he could pull in order to try to work this issue out. And I kind of agreed with him when I read that, it seemed a little, you know, inconspicuous that he was trying to work stuff out, but the first meeting that he could get, this is what my understanding of the read, was the first meeting that he could get to try to resolve this issue was the day after the appeal period would close, which essentially forced him to appeal in order to resolve this. So that, for me, is a concern, so I was wondering if you could address that.
Yeah, so my involvement was a little bit after that, but my understanding was there was plenty of opportunities with this applicant to meet with staff. There was lots of suggestions that that should happen and the date, the date of the meeting was set, not really fully understanding the deadline for the appeal, from my understanding, so my staff.
Stand by, Mark. So for the people at home, this is John Lewis, Public Works Director.
Oh, thank you for that. So it's my understanding that our staff were working on trying to set up a meeting, that the project engineer was trying to set up a meeting with the right people at that meeting. And, you know, we had suggested that meeting happen much sooner and didn't happen. Knowing the timeline of when the appeal happened and when the meeting was, when the meeting time was set, it wasn't even established that the appeal was even going to happen. So they had scheduled that meeting ahead of time, that's my understanding of that. And we have Josh on the phone who may be able to better articulate that, but for us, it was from the engineering group side, it was, yes, we needed to have this meeting, yes, we wanted to get the folks, the right folks to the table, that was the best time to have the meeting. And it wasn't until after the fact and after we heard from the applicant that there was a problem with or a concern that we scheduled that meeting the day after.
Not right now.
You know, so timing, yeah, looks a little bit odd, but wasn't intentional.
And I'd like to add one thing to that. The applicant submitted an application with the design that they chose. The design that they chose to write their approval criteria against and have a complete application is the one that did not include the pond. If they wanted to do, they could have, they could have submitted a design with the pond in the first place. So our full staff report that you saw, the original approval, didn't include the pond because their proposal wasn't the pond at that time.
So I'm going to get into this and say, we're at a space where we have an agreement. And while I understand your question and I agree with you, I think that's a discussion we can have at a different time. So if somebody has something to, you know, contribute that says we shouldn't be doing this approval of the appeal and the conditions, I'm interested in hearing that, but I don't want to hear a lot of what happened the last two or three months.
So I have one more question then, are we, is there any concern about vacation of the right of way? My concern is this is one other hinge point that could completely derail the applicant's project and in all fairness to the applicant, I'm not saying it could happen, but they could get down the road and come back to us and if we denied it, then is there, is there any way that we could do some, some action at this point in time that would move, you know, I don't know, solidify any of that, I mean?
You mean pre-approve a vacation?
Yeah.
I don't think we have the authority or ability to do that until something is filed.
There's a statutory process that the city has to follow.
Right.
I guess that's the risk of the.
It's the risk of the applicant.
The applicant. And I assume that, and I'm giving a thumbs up from Dane, that he has enough confidence in the negotiations had with the city that that is something that can be done. So Commissioner O'Donnell, you have anything for us?
Oh, I appreciate Commissioner Lyles Smith's question because that's the one that was on my mind. I do think there's two issues and one is to be determined tonight, which is the approval of this application or not. The other, I believe, is an internal review of our processes in this application, which is not the subject of this meeting, so I'm ready to proceed.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing.
Commissioner McGriff?
No.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, is there a motion?
Could I get a, Mr. Mayor, could I get a clarification from our fantastic attorney on the staff's suggestions were that we approve the appeal with the conditions that, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I, it is counterintuitive, but that's the way.
Yes, I know.
It's, it is a little...
But maybe explaining it for the public as well.
Sure, it is a little counter, counterintuitive, but if you were to deny the appeal, it'd go back to the plan as it was approved by planning staff, which is not the one that the applicant and staff have sort of agreed to in working through these issues. And so by, um, what did we call it, uh, accepting the appeal, uh, what you're doing is saying, it's gonna be different than what planning staff, uh, approved in their initial decision. And to do that, you've got to accept the appeal and that's all it does is change the, the conditions.
Okay, I, yeah, all right. I would, I'd like to move that we, uh, approve, uh, the appeal AP 2000004, 001, sorry, I'm not reading four here, 001, uh, with the conditions as submitted in the staff report dated 4/1/2020.
One second.
Uh, moved by Commissioner McGriff, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Uh, further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. Okay, so moving on. Uh, continuance of, uh, this is PC 20-57, continuance of AP 20-02, appeal of circuit review, approval with conditions for blah, blah, blah. I have just one quick question. Is this the, the dead lot kitty corner from the midway?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Next to, yeah, next to, uh, Mountain Tech Subaru.
Right, right, right. So, uh, Ms. Turway?
Staff recommends a continuance to April 15th. Uh, the purpose of the continuance was so that we didn't have to do three of these tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner McGriff, seconded by Commissioner Lyle Smith. Call roll, please.
Whatever your name is.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. Okay, general business, uh, 20-200, Ed C, we're gonna see rental properties, Mr. Conkle?
Uh, thank you. Bringing before, uh, the commission authorization to negotiate the deferral of rental payments from tenants of city-owned properties if a demonstrable hardship has been created through the loss of business or employment from the novel corona, coronavirus crisis. Uh, the city of Oregon City owns one commercial property, five residential properties, one waterfront access strip and one facility with two cellphone provisions that are currently being leased. The commercial property waterfront access strip and city facility leases are managed by staff and the five residential properties are managed by Bluestone and Hockley Real Estate Services. Um, so in looking at this, uh, it provided in the staff report, uh, the rental rates for the residential properties, uh, that are managed by Bluestone but owned by the city as well as the, uh, commercial property and then the information about the waterfront access strip and the, uh, two leases for cell tower providers on the Boynton Reservoir. Uh, so staff has proposed creating a process for the tenant to demonstrate a measurable and definable impact such as a business closure, significant loss of business revenue, or the loss of employment directly related to COVID-19. Staff would negotiate a deferral of rental payments and agreement for payment in full if the deferral was at a later date, either over time or in increment depending on the situation. Uh, staff would not propose addressing the facility lease agreements for the two cellphone providers located at the Boynton Reservoir, uh, that currently significant uncertainty related to the duration of this event and the eventual impact on the economy, employment. Staff would work with tenants, being as consistent as possible and realizing that future events may result in the loss of rental income that is deferred. Uh, with Bluestone, they are a management company for the residential side. They charge, uh, seven to 12% of the rental income for the management fee. We would continue to pay that even if we did defer a rent, uh, because we still do need their services. Uh, but then we would also, um, potentially look at, on the commercial side, it's a little bit easier. We would look at a balloon payment at the end. Obviously, if they wanna pay a long, uh, uh, monthly installments, we would encourage that. It'll be no interest. We could convert that to a loan should that, um, should that agreement or should the lease be broken. Uh, the residential properties, although one have a, a, a year lease to them, so we could have a similar format for that. One is month-to-month, which we'll have to work with. I have not received any questions concerning, uh, the, um, um, from any, any of the renters, uh, by city-owned properties at this point as it relates to any type of assistance with rental payment at this time.
Okay, so if we approve this, authorize you to, to follow this, this path, would the city, I, I would want to see you reach out in a letter or something to those residential properties and tell them the process.
So we would work for both commercial and residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this is fundamentally the same thing we talked about in the last meeting in her renewal. Um, does anybody have any questions, concerns?
I would just recommend that that letter from Bluestone and Hockley be a little bit better written. It was just a little strange when I read it. I thought, if I'd gotten this as a tenant, I would've said like, what?
I think those came, well, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you'll fix it, you'll fix. So anyway, I'll move.
It's already gone.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to negotiate the deferral of rental payments for tenants of city-owned properties with the exception of the two cellphone towers?
Yes.
Two cell phone tower leases, uh, if demonstrated hardship has been created, et cetera, et cetera, that we said before.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner McGriff, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. So, um, we're gonna pull AA, so let's get a, a motion for the, uh, rest of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Minus item 8A.
Second.
Minus 8A.
Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
I can't wait to see the cool John Deere tractor.
Yeah, with the, um...
Backhoe.
Oh, the backhoe, the cool John Deere backhoe.
With the, the high-end Bosch audio system. Um... 20-195 is personal service agreement with 3J Consulting Phase 1 of the comprehensive plan update. Ms. Turway?
Thank you very much. Uh, staff has proposed a, uh, personal services agreement to start the comprehensive plan update. Um, this is just phase one of the comp plan. The comp plan is expected to last until winter 2021. Um, this first phase is just to do a lot of public engagement, work with community over the next six months to understand what they would like for the future of Oregon City.
Commissioner McGriff?
Thank you. Um, the reason that I asked just this to be pulled is that I wanted to make sure, I'd already spoken with, uh, uh, Ms. Turway about the selection process and I just wanted to make sure that the public, uh, understood that this was part of the, of a, um, grant from the state and there was a specific process that you had to go through for that. If you would like to explain that for the benefit of our citizens.
Yes, um, so 42,500 is funded through a technical assistance grant from DLCD and, um...
Just make sure you explain what that is because we all know what it is, but not everybody does.
Department of Conservation and Development. So we, the city facilitated a standard procurement process, so we identified, we played together a bid process on our website and emailed it to every firm that we were aware of that did this type of work. We received two submittals, not a whole lot, but we were asking for a lot of work for a relatively small amount of money. And, um, those submittals were reviewed internally by, um, a couple of people in our planning department, our economic development manager, as well as the chair of our CIC. And, um, 3J, um, came on, up on top for the winner of that submittal. The reason why I suspect we didn't get more submittals is because the bulk of this project, there'll be about another $150,000 that will fund phase two or the remainder of the project. That is going through a procurement process by our Oregon Department of Transportation, who gave us, um, some funding, most of the funding for that portion of the project. And in their procurement process, you have to have been, um, already on a selected list of consultants or have to have someone from your team on their consultant list, uh, which only includes five. It's a small pool of consultants around here, so, um, we only received two. But we're very excited with, actually, both submittals were wonderful and, um, we're excited to move forward with 3J.
Okay, is there a motion?
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Since we brought up funding in Department of Land Conservation and Development, I would like to make a comment that while I work for the Department of Land Conservation and Development, I am not part of the selection process who picks, uh, the awardees for our technical assistance grant program.
Thank you for that disclosure, Commissioner Lyle Smith. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 20-195, personal services agreement with 3J Consulting for Phase 1 of the comprehensive plan update.
Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Lyle Smith, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
I'm gonna abstain.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye, motion carries. Um, that gets us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Manager, you got anything for us?
Uh, just a reminder to the general public that while our facilities are closed to the public, that we are still available, uh, for, for, to contact staff, uh, via phone, email, uh, so that we're still, we're still here working, processing applications, addressing questions, utility billing, uh, engineering. So we are, we're here, we will, while a much diminished presence in the neighborhoods, uh, we do have staff that are working, uh, limiting our access, uh, in the neighborhoods, but, um, doing what we can to, you know, keep up with routine maintenance that's necessary to keep the city operating as well as to address any emergency, uh, issues that do come up with infrastructure and whatnot that does exist out there.
Okay. Commissioner Lyle Smith, you have anything for us?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, yes, please. Um, I'd like to, uh, thank the staff for all of their hard work on some of these more difficult applications. Uh, I know that it is very difficult at times to sometimes think outside the box because you've got, you've got applicants that submit certain things and, um, you can only work with what you're given. So I just want you to know how much I appreciate it and I read all of those staff reports thoroughly and thank you for the work.
Thank you. Um, so just a last comment from me. I occasionally get, uh, a little slapped around on social media because I'm not out there every day telling you the same things that you're seeing on every news station and every radio station. Um, I, I am, uh, up to date. Uh, we get briefings on a weekly basis, both from Metro and the state. Um, I pay attention to the, uh, the president's briefings every day, uh, so I'm not gonna be out there blah, blah, on this thing unless the city has something specific we need to get out to our community. So I would encourage you to, once again, stay with places, the, the news sources that you recognize and that you trust. And that includes the Oregon Health Authority website, uh, DHS's website, the CDC website, um, and, and the city's website. And, um, and please don't believe things about, you know, from BuzzFeed or any of these other little, you know, websites out there that just, uh, are pushing some kind of propaganda one way or the other. Uh, this is, this is a serious situation, but we will get through it. And the way we're gonna get through it is by trusting each other and by making sure that we're not spreading false information because that's the worst thing that can happen. With that, we're adjourned.
I appreciate that you said that because there's some attorney generals' suits out there for people with...
Oh, yeah.
...scam, uh, cures for this.
Right.